We're going to open the November 26th Board of Selectmen meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Do we want to do the minutes first, ladies? Or do we want to jump to having Joe?
Let's just approve them.
Approve the minutes? Okay. We have quite a few minutes. Does everybody have a chance to look at all of them? Thank you too.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That included the executive session, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Alrighty. Okay. Do we want to just continue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Appointments, terms expiring 5/31/2019. We have the Earthworks Advisory Board. We have Joe. And we have Lynn Sally. And then there's one more opening that we're hoping to fill.
Actually, I was reading the minutes. And it looks like that's supposed to be five. There's supposed to also be somebody from Conservation and Board of Health. Is that?
We were just discussing that. Because I had the same question. And according to the Earthworks bylaw, it says three.
Well, the bylaw doesn't have an advisory board at all, but...
It didn't pass.
Okay.
Yeah, that didn't pass. But you did... Then I sent to the webmaster, which he hasn't put up online yet, a request for three members. I must have got that from more recent set of minutes. You said you were looking at some old documents.
Yeah, I looked at something today that said...
Today that had that in it.
So if you want five, then you could just go ahead and appoint these two and hold those other three spaces open?
And it was supposed to be... Tell me if you got the same...
Somebody from Conservation, somebody from Board of Health, two BOS and Joe.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I had too.
Sounds correct, yeah.
So...
I'll invite the other boards to send somebody?
Right. Conservation and Board of Health. And I think Lynn Sally would be one of our Board of Selectmen appointees.
And to advertise the selectmen's vacancy?
Yep. And then, yeah. That'd be good. But until then...
Joe also said he would ask. I did ask him to...
Ask around?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So do we want to appoint Joe and Lynn Sally to the Earthworks Advisory Board?
Motion to appoint.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have the Town Space Storage Study Committee with Tom Galvin, George Pendergast, David Smith, Richard Smith. We don't have a planning board member. However, we may want to move forward and just perhaps if planning board's needed, they can contact them as necessary.
Yeah.
Motion to... Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, let's get that going.
And for both of those, you can send whatever charge...
Yep.
...we have that we've put together. So what next is the dissolution of the Town Management Study Committee, retroactive to 10/15. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to dissolve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Completion of Board of Selectmen. So this is on the agenda. The completion of the Board of Selectmen Appointed Personnel Evaluations. Did you have a chance to talk to Mary?
No, I didn't have a chance to talk to Mary.
Okay.
I have an unsigned copy. Just a scanned copy. I don't have the original.
Okay. Well, that might be all there is.
If you want to...
There was an original. That's how I scanned it.
If you want a...
Hmm.
Yeah. Well, I can give you the unsigned original.
Well, we might need to do that.
Unsigned copy.
Yeah.
Scanned copy. Shall I give it to you? Give it to all three? Send it to all three?
Okay.
And personnel.
And to personnel?
Yes, please.
So the board won't sign it?
I think we do need to sign it at some point. And we're still waiting on personnel for Dennis and...
Molly?
And Molly and...
You don't do Molly?
No, they are.
No, but we're just saying.
Oh.
Did you guys get the Joe summary I wrote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I just think you need to add that he had two direct reports added this year.
Oh, okay. All right, I can do that. Yeah, because I noticed that it was just like a combination of all our comments really without a summary. So I just went through some of the top and tried to make it a summary. But I will add the two direct reports and then whiz that back around.
Okay. And then we'll just put it on for approval.
Yep. Next week?
That's fine with me.
I can turn it. I mean, that's an easy turn. I can do that tonight when I get home.
And while we're talking about personnel, I didn't know whether it might be a good idea to approve the personnel recommendation for salary increases while we're at it. I don't know that we ever did that. It was this sheet?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we referenced that, how many Saturdays that we were together, so...
Right.
I don't think any of us had any issues with it.
I don't know that we ever took a vote that... Do you remember?
Probably not.
No.
I do know it seems we didn't actually pass over that we had recommended 3.5% for Joe. They didn't seem to have that information, that we did in fact do that in the...
Oh.
Yeah.
That was, yeah.
That was on a Saturday. Yeah, I don't think that we updated that.
No.
Okay. So we'll send a note back to the...
Do you want to do this along with the evaluations next week or...
However you want to do it. I mean, I think that's the only issue in there.
All right.
As long as that's corrected.
I can email Mr. Bradley and Ms. Pond, Mrs. Pond, and fix it.
Okay.
You should add in one. Add in one.
Changing one.
Yeah, just changing one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
All right. Then we'll put that on also for next week. Mary?
Yep. For a vote next week to increase that?
To change that, yeah. And to vote, finish up the evaluations. Commencement of annual evaluations of Police and Fire at EMS. I know we've talked about this, but I didn't know whether it might be a good idea to just put together a paragraph or something of, you know, "We appreciate all this you're doing" and so on and so forth. And maybe if there's some things to work on for either the police chief or the fire chief.
I guess my feeling was that we had decided not to do it. And I also think that it doesn't make a whole lot of sense at this juncture since the TA will probably have different ideas when they come in. And the board has not done that in the past.
Me and I go back and forth because we know that there's issue with one half of those items about continually missed deadlines and budget issues. I mean, is that...
Well, we're also starting a search for that position.
Correct.
It just...
So it doesn't really matter.
It doesn't really seem like something we need to do at this point.
Well, we might want to keep it on the back burner for next year then?
Yeah.
Well, that's, like I said, the TA will be doing this next year.
Right.
So they can handle that however they see fit. You also have their, by contract, their raises. We don't actually decide that. So anything that you say is not really...
Valid.
You kind of indicate disapproval by not renewing a contract.
For perhaps the fire chief? Is that what you're saying?
Well, just, yeah.
For example?
I mean, they're contracted. Their raises are contracted.
For so many years. And then you have to re-up the contract.
Right. And like I said, the way you indicate disapproval is by not re-upping their contract.
Or negotiating, yeah. Okay, well, I mean...
Those contracts, every three years, four years, five?
It depends on the contract.
I don't think it's more than three.
More than three?
It's five for the police chief.
Is it five?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
And it was three for the fire.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big difference.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to ask again, see, I mean, I could have gone either way. Approval of the Administrative Secretary job description. Does anybody need a copy?
No. As good as it's the same as...
It's what we, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I can't do what you suggested online.
Really?
Because it's an Apple.
Even in Word? You don't have Word on Apple?
Yeah, it did put it in Word.
The Word version, well...
And it doesn't have like a review?
So do I.
Yeah. But the Apple version is not as robust as the Microsoft version. I didn't try to or look to see how, if it would work.
Oh.
But there are sometimes issues with...
Okay. Yeah, I got it all cleaned up except the one comment that I couldn't get rid of and that side piece.
Microsoft doesn't really feel like they need to update their software for Apple.
That's what my husband says. They don't play nice with each other.
Do you want the job description to go to personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Did we vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Finalized the building inspectors' hours. Joe, do you want to come up?
Thank you for having me. I had handed out at the beginning before this started a package. If you get a chance to just look at it quickly, we can discuss if you'd like. Top sheet was the email that I sent to the three of you last week recommending after the discussion with LeAnn, basically what would probably work well in the office for people. And I don't know if you guys got a chance to look it over, if you had any comments for those particular window hours in those days, or if there was something else that you might be looking for.
I had to do a... To see what it all looked like.
They actually aligned.
Wow.
They aligned pretty well with the research that I did. It looks very similar to what, I mean...
Right.
They're all over the place in different communities, but they in general follow that sort of...
Stop making fun of me.
Yeah, that I'm not even laughing with. I'm laughing at. There you go.
Thanks.
You're welcome. I'm not hard.
So do you want, do you want me to show you this, Joe? It's what you said in the email.
Okay.
And then I just scribbled notes and stuff for myself on it.
Okay.
And so I agree completely with the window hours. Those are fine. Will all of this fit into that then?
So...
What you're saying?
All right. I'm just a little confused with, it says...
Well, the top part is mine.
Oh, what we had talked about last week?
Uh, well, it's similar.
Oh, oh, oh.
But I was trying to fit it into, you know, what you had sent in the email.
Oh, oh, okay. I understand. I understand what you're saying now.
I mean, I just want to make sure that what you have given us here fits into the window hours and whatever hours.
Yeah, so what you have here, the window hours of the eight to 10, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, is that two-hour window, I think, which would work well. And the five to seven that I had listed to here on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday by appointment was basically allow homeowners or residents by appointment to come in and meet with me. And it leaves a couple of hours, particularly because those three nights are the meeting nights between you guys on Monday nights, planning board, and energy committee on Tuesday nights, and ZBA on Wednesday nights. Thursday and Fridays usually don't have evening meetings, very rarely if they do.
Right.
So that's the reason why, like, LeAnn and I put this together. And I wanted to see what would support her as well. So we had figured that eight to 10 window was good in the morning.
Yep. And then, so if you were working like eight and a half hours, I would assume that here you'd have time to go home or do whatever.
Well, what I was thinking, like, well, the five to seven, I wouldn't be coming back five to seven. It would be by appointment only. So if somebody said, "Can you meet me at 5:00," then I would make sure that I came in for that 5:00 window instead of just, like, I live 45 minutes from here.
Yeah.
So if I leave 45, one way, 45 back, that's an hour and a half.
Right.
And if I only have like a couple-hour window, it doesn't make sense for me to even leave the building.
Right.
You know? So I just wanted to make sure that, I wanted to match what you guys were looking for for 40 hours a week and still stay within the timeframe. So that's why I offered those by appointment. And then I could just modify that day, particularly by who's coming in in the evening. If somebody says, "I need to meet with you for a couple hours," or something like that, then I could modify in the morning my schedule, like, early afternoon to accommodate something like that.
So if you were coming in for a meeting, for example, would, you plan to be here anyway, so even if someone just dropped in?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You could help them out.
So you...
You know, so it didn't always have to be by appointment.
Right. Yeah, and that's why I think I had mentioned that in the email, was that those are typically meeting nights, so I'm here preparing anyhow, which, you know, allows people, if by an off chance they catch me here...
Yeah.
...preparing for a meeting, then I would already be here.
Because it is, it's kind of hard to make appointments until we get you that cell phone.
Yeah. Well, they can call the office or email.
They can.
And as a matter of fact, I have somebody coming tomorrow from Verizon to talk to me about the phone, so... Forget his first name, I think it's Roberto from Verizon's coming up. And we're going to meet tomorrow, one, no, 2:00, 2 to 3 tomorrow.
Right.
But there is an office phone number that can be called, correct?
Yeah, there's an office number and there's email.
And is it on the door by any chance?
The office number? Yeah, so it's on the door. It's on the website for the building management website, yeah.
Because I know people do tend to drop in sometimes.
So what do we do on the days when you've got meetings and you're not here? Like, on Tuesday, December 18th, you're gone from 8 to 12?
Right. Well, let's, so going on to that, so I gave you a package of from this week...
Yep.
...moving forward till the end of this calendar year. We take this week in particular, right? So tomorrow, if you look, from 7 to 1, I have the meeting out in Charlton. And then from 2 to 3, I have the meeting here for Verizon. And then Wednesday, I'm here in the morning, but I have a subcontractor meeting that's over at the hotel from 10:30 to 11:30. And then I'm in Lumenster for a district meeting and training from 12 to 4. And then Thursday is an all-day training. I'm not even at the building from 8 to 5, and that's in Milford. And then Friday, I'm off. So that's just this week in a glance.
Right.
That's not a typical week, of course. It just so happened because of the holiday and the way things fell with trainings and whatever, it mashed into this whole thing. I gave you, so like I said, it covers the whole thing. Some of what is in here are set, like, things that are set and sewn, but they don't reflect my fluid portion of my day, which is the inspections and things that come in and are scheduled throughout my day. Today I started off, I had like one inspection. By the end of the day, I had five. So sometimes my day just evolves like that. So that's not in here. But that would be filled in every 24 hours. Usually asked for 24 hours in advance. But like I said, the majority of things in here are pretty much set and sewn. That third and fourth Tuesday, the fourth Wednesday, that's every single month.
Now, are the meetings that you go to, they're not all where you get continuing education credits?
They are actually. I'm the vice president for the Metro West, so every month we have a training. And that's part of my job as a vice president, is to schedule the training each month for the calendar year. And then the other one is the Treasure and the Federation. And we go out, we get three hours of continuing education credits for that meeting. And we deal with the state issues. We represent the state as the, all the building officials for the state. And then the Lumenster one is a district meeting for this area. And that always has a state inspector that puts on and inspect, a training for us.
So here's a question, just for my own application. Is there ever like a building inspection emergency? Because my, let's pretend that this week is next week. And you're gone from 7 to 1, and then you come back for a little bit, but the window was passed. And then the next morning, you're kind of like out of pocket, and then the next morning, you're out of pocket. So that could be potentially three days where people can't get you. Is there ever anything, ever like an emergency where, Joe, you got to come up and do an inspection?
Only if it's in the case of an actual emergency.
Something happens.
So like a structural collapse, a fire, current to a building, something along that lines. If it's something where it's imminent danger, then yes. If it's something like, hey, you know, it's going to rain tomorrow, I need an inspection.
Are you going to put a move on?
Yeah. You know, it's, the calendar's already filled, and you need to call in advance to schedule.
So then what would we do in cases like that, if you're tied up for like a couple days in a row and somebody needs to get to you for an inspection?
Unfortunately, they have to wait. I'm the only one here.
Okay.
And it...
We have 72 hours.
That's what I was just going to say.
Yeah. I mean, I had somebody...
And they all know that.
Yeah. I asked for 24-hour advanced notice to book an inspection, but I have 72 hours in which I have to conduct the inspection.
Okay. So there's time?
Yes. I also gave you, you had asked a couple of days that were on my calendar, so I gave you November 9th and November 14th, which had inspections at 7:00 a.m. November 14th, I had two up at the Green Acres. One was a sheathing inspection, the other one was insulation. And then I had a footing excavation inspection at 17 Jones Road on the 9th.
These are things that were, appointments were made for?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
The one on Jones Road was prior to pouring the foundation for concrete. And then the other one was Nine Bigelow, which is up at Green Acres, is prior to them being able to side the building, so I have to check all the flashing and everything. And then the other one was the other building where they wanted to side hanging sheet rock, but they needed an insulation inspection. So both of those were time-sensitive because the crews got on at 7:00, and they needed to get going right away because that's their normal hours. So that's why those inspections were in there for 7:00. And then this last one that I handed out are actually the list of inspections that are done during construction, just because Peg had some questions about it last week. So I just wanted to make sure that you kind of understand the order in which inspections go and who needs to sign off when. And this is, I have this right outside my door and in the office. So when people that come into town or homeowners are acting as their own contractor, I hand this to them.
So they know what they need.
So they know what they're doing, yeah.
So then what do we want to put in for hours? I mean, it's, thank you, Joe. I appreciate you doing that.
Well, I would motion to approve the hours that were offered, since LeAnn and Joe both think that they are good window hours.
That's the window hours?
Yeah.
What hours were you talking?
But nobody else lists on the website 40 hours, because the inspections drive the time in the office. That was very clear from multiple people that I talked to the other day. Nobody will list 40 hours on that, because you can't guarantee. You only want to put the window hours on the website, because those are the only hours that you can guarantee that somebody's going to be there.
Would it be possible to have not just for one of the evenings, perhaps? That we could count on you to be there for one of the evenings, even though there may not be in any appointments?
Yeah. How would you want me to work that in my schedule?
How would you like to work that in your schedule?
Well, I guess from my take from last week, you wanted me to work a 40-hour, and you were offering all different types of times.
Right.
So I guess my question is, is what are you thinking for times for the 40 hours, so that I can plan accordingly to come in in the evening for that?
You mean, like, like I said last week, like 8 to 4:30?
Yeah, like, if you say, Joe, your hours are 8 to 4:30, and, you know, you're going to be here for window hours, 5 to 7 on whatever night you want.
Well, if he, yeah, if he's going to come in from 5 to 7, then the expectation would be that he would be able to come in later.
Right.
So that he wouldn't have to...
Right.
That's kind of what I put up here, was 8 to 2:30 on Monday and 5 to 7. And...
But really, I mean...
Because of the two hours in the evening.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
My, like, again, my only concern with that, and I work whatever hours you want, of course. It was just that I'm going to be here straight through. You know, you told me that I'm out at 2:30, because it's 45 minutes.
Well, that's what I'm assuming.
I would come in later if I were you. I would come in later.
Well, you've got window hours from 8 to 10, then how can you do that?
On the same, on the same day?
Yeah. Eight to 10 and 5 to 7 on Monday. You could do that on Tuesday.
Well, do that on Tuesday. Make that your mandatory one and just come in later on Tuesday.
Okay. I can do that.
So say that again, now.
Make Tuesday 5 to 7 the mandatory one, the one that you'll always be here and come in later.
Okay.
Sleep in, take your kids to the bus, do whatever. Run errands.
If the board is agreeable to that, that's fine.
Well, that's kind of what I actually wrote here, is 10:30 to 7.
Okay.
Because that worked up to eight hours. But, you know...
Worked out what works.
We just want you to be available so people can access you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all.
No, and I want to be accessible as well. That's why, you know, talking with LeAnn and coming up with these hours for window time...
Yeah.
You know, puts me in the office at that time.
I do know that, um, one of the things that you said too, though, was that you're here pretty routinely at those times, and how many times have people actually stopped in to see you at those times?
On the five to seven?
Yep.
Um, in the year and a half, or almost, yeah, a year and a half that I've been here, um, I can count maybe a handful of times people actually walking in.
Well, I mean, yeah, but if it's on the door as a time when you will be here, it might be different.
Yeah, I mean, well, the past six months, when I was working the second job, I was here in the evenings through anyway. Um, and it, that falls into the same realm.
I'd be curious to track it, so that after six months, if no one comes in from five to seven, then.
By appointment only.
Then just by appointment only.
Yeah, then you just do away with it, so that you're not here. I mean, it's not fair for you to hang and sit if no one's coming in. So, yeah, if you could track those, tick mark and a box, I don't care. Um, just so that we can review and be like, yeah, Joe, there's nobody coming in from five to seven.
Yeah, I mean, um, I can do basically what I do with my calendar.
Yeah.
I'll just put on the Tuesday that I was in here, between that five to seven, I'll just put appointments or no appointments.
Yeah.
Or walk-ins, no walk-in.
And this has inspections on it and that kind of thing, too, so.
Yeah, well, currently this monthly one.
Right.
Does not, because that's changed day to day. You know, but like, if you look at November ninth, you can see the inspections that were in here. And November fourteenth, the inspections and the meetings that were in here. So, you know, like I said, that part of my day is fluid.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, things like that will, will, they remain on record anyway, in the.
Well, and it also wouldn't be a bad idea, um, to keep track of your hours and your inspections, because for budgeting purposes in the future, it might be, well, to say, see, you know.
Here's my justification for eighty-five new people, yeah.
Right, not eighty-five.
Eighty-four.
LeAnn gives a monthly thing saying the number of inspections in each area.
Yeah, well, it doesn't have times and, you know, how often, and that kind of thing. So it would be helpful, I think, if you could do that, at least for a while, and.
Yeah, I mean, all, all my calendars have the actual times that I go to those inspections, so.
Right.
That'll, that'll just stay the norm then.
Okay.
Okay.
So motion to approve the recommended hours here, with just five to seven on Tuesday being mandatory, rather than by appointment.
Agreed. Seconded.
Okay, um. Is, is there anything else, I guess I should say?
No, I think we're good, I think we're pretty thorough.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I would just like to add that, um, if you could keep all three of us in the loop about things.
Sure.
Emails, texts.
Okay.
That'd be great.
All right.
I mean, you know, we can't deliberate.
No, yeah.
Outside of the meeting, but just informational, that'd be great.
All right, yeah, that's why, like, I, when I sent this out, I sent it, you know, but yeah, I'll do that.
And sorry we didn't answer, but.
No, 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 and I, I completely, you know, after reading it back, I said, well, they can't tell me if they're agreeable, but, yeah. Um, no, I, I appreciate it, thank you.
And before Joe goes, and maybe it goes under business, but I'll sneak it in, he and I were chatting, a few ladies showed up. We had bantered about, many times, about a form where all the departments sign off when there's permit that needs to go, so that you can't say, oh, ZBA didn't know, conservation didn't know. So Joe gave me a list of all the people that need to sign off. Some maybe not applicable, with name, address, date, quick summary, and I'll put it together, and maybe it's something that we can vote on next week.
This is for?
Just so that when someone, so some, you know, Sally, Sally Jones moves into town, and she's putting up a house, and she's gotta go to Joe, and she's gotta go to the Board of Health, and she's gotta go to Conservation, and blab, blab, blab.
I thought view permit was supposed to do that.
Well, view permit will have that, yeah, but wouldn't, we don't have that up running yet. But the view permit, the way it's set up is, um, when somebody applies for a permit, it'll come in as an applied, and it goes to the tax collector first, um, because if they owe taxes on the property, they can't get a permit. And then, once we resolve that issue, then it comes through, I do an initial look-through to make sure that all their documents are in place, and then what happens is that goes on, um, a chain. So it'll go to the Fire Department, Board of Health, and so on.
Okay.
Makes its way all the way through, once it's completely done, and everybody's made their comments, then it comes to me. Then I do my official review of it, and release the permit if everybody's good. At least what this does is it gives me a cohesive report, and then if there's something missing from one of the departments, I can say to the applicant that you're missing.
Something.
This from the Board of Health.
Yeah.
So you need to make sure you get that taken care of before I can issue a permit.
Right.
And how quick?
How quick?
When will view permit be rolling out?
So, view permit should be rolling around maybe two, three weeks, and then it'll be out.
So we probably don't need to do a form, since in two, three weeks, the software will take care of it.
Yeah, that's true, I didn't even.
Would anybody else need it that doesn't have access to the software?
So it's, actually, it's done in-house. So if you, if you apply by paper, um, we're gonna take it in, we scan it, and then upload everything to view permit.
Okay.
At that point in time is when it's gonna go to all the other departments, and it's all electronic.
Okay.
So that way, that's done that way. And if somebody wants to apply online from home, they can do it, and then that'll just jumpstart the process a little faster.
And it, and is the person who's applying for a permits, perhaps, or building house, or Sally, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would they be able to see this information, or?
Yeah.
And they would need to contact, and that?
So, actually, it, it's done remotely, so as it goes through each department, I'll respond to the applicant personally, and let them know, you know, you need to get a deed restriction, you need this, X, Y, Z, whatever they need, um, to make sure that they're fully informed during the process.
Yeah.
Um, so they'll get regular updates. They can check on the permit process, as far as, you know, has my permit been issued yet? Um, you know, whereabouts is it in the process, is it in Fire Department review? Has the building inspector done his review yet? So they'll be able to see that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Are there timeframes? Like it sits with you, you've got to turn it in X hours, so the Board of Health, they've got to turn it in.
Yeah, so, well, see, so mandated by law is Fire and, and myself.
Yeah.
So I have thirty days, um, and that's calendar days, to turn around a building permit, whether it's an approval or a denial.
Okay.
Um, with comments. The Fire Department has ten days. So I work in conjunction with them, usually my permits go out at the ten-day mark, so that they're ahead of schedule. Um, because it's, the, the state really comes down on us to make sure that we do that.
Okay.
And like Conservation and the rest of them, I don't think have the same.
They, they don't, so it'll be basically my due diligence, kind of.
Or the person to do, like, the gentle nudges.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, cool.
She's good at that.
Yeah.
Nudges.
Oh, yeah, telling them what my new T-shirt's gonna be, but I'll wait until the camera's off before I tell you guys, so there you go.
But you have to, like, with, with the boards, they only meet.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
You kind of, you can't have expectations that it's gonna immediately turn around, because they have.
Right.
Okay.
Infrequent meeting times.
Yep.
That'll be nice. Can we, um, do we have any plans to advertise this? Maybe on your website, yeah, just to let people know that it's out there?
Yeah, so, once we have everything squared away, like, right now, we're working out the bugs. Um, I've actually been applying for permits, like, through it. Um, it looks pretty good, but there's been a few things that are hit up, so we're working those bugs out. Um, once it's done, it's gonna go live, it's gonna go on the building department webpage, saying that you can apply for a permit online, view permit. Um, and then it'll also go on the building department, um, portion, where it says contact information.
Okay.
And permit information is on there as well.
Awesome.
And then, um, as a matter of fact, we'll be able to help set people up with the kiosk that we have right in the front, when you come in the door, there's a computer there, we'll be able to help people if, if it's their first time using it.
Oh, nice.
To help them get acclimated to the software, that way that they can do it remotely, rather than having to come into the department all the time.
Cool, glad I jumped in, thanks, Joe.
No problem.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And you're gonna put all these hours and things up on your door, and.
Yeah, so, um, LeAnn and I drafted the window hours, instead of saying office hours, it's gonna say window hours. Um, so people don't think that I'm.
Office hours would be the eight to twelve that LeAnn's here.
Right, right, yeah, so, um, but the, the window hours will be that eight to ten window, um, for people to see me, so that's gonna go up. And then we'll have the webmaster update the, uh, the website.
Right.
For the department. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
All right, I don't believe we have any two thousand nineteen license renewals. Well, we do, we do, but not done and ready.
I only departed TGI Fridays, it's just gonna be a healthy stack next week.
Okay. So we've got a letter to RWJ regarding the eleven-five two thousand, uh, eleven-five vote. And I believe.
Incorporates the lawyer's changes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, other new business. Do you, do you have anything, have you heard anything about the negotiations for police?
Uh, he was waiting for them to come back.
They're, we're waiting on them?
We're waiting on them.
Okay.
Yes, and have been waiting on them.
For quite a while now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, falls in their court.
Yeah. Okay, um. Any other old business, selectmen, old business, yay.
I have four.
You're on.
All right, less than a minute, here we go. Um, so I was telling Lisa, uh, Peter Hoffman reached out, he was all concerned that we were gonna like, take it back. Yeah, take it back.
Oh.
I'm just like, go, go. Yeah. That's what I basically said, go, have fun, get Berlin in bright lights, contact Mary in a month, let us know where you are, see ya.
For an appointment?
Yep. Um, so Mr. Farabee, I had mentioned, when Dennis was here, when he was talking about going out to other brokers for plans.
Mm-hmm.
And mentioned that Mercer did it, my company. So I poked around, poked around, and actually got him in touch with a gal from Marsh and McClellan, who's our parent company out of New York. And they do municipalities, they do small ones, so I, Dennis gave me the information, I sent it to her. I sent her Dennis's information, I sent Dennis's her information, and I'm out. So it's up to them if they wanna make contact, but figure, uh, it might be nice to have, um, a larger company kind of behind you uh, to do that. The coffee, so I took your comments, Chris, on the coffee hour notes, but there were some that I didn't have. I didn't know if any of either of you had had a chance to look at it, to like, add to it, cause I'd like to get it done and get it up on the web. There were some blank ones.
Wow.
Like Lisa, I, I stopped taking comments when you were talking about the fire chief and the.
Oh, the fire pun, you needed to put something in another fire pun?
Yeah, so if you could just go through them and add in any comments that I may have missed.
Did you just resend it recently, or?
Last week.
Okay, I'm having trouble with my email again.
Do you like me to resend?
Yeah.
All right, I got that. And then, Mary, can I get with you later on my IRFP since, well, I thought I was gonna get out of this easy with a job description, and apparently not, so, for the fire chief.
Are you, are you looking for a job description, or are you looking for a search firm, or a recruiting firm?
Do we do both? I mean, no?
No, because they will do the job description.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, no, we have the job description, what it was, it was the ad.
Yeah, but they'll, they'll also.
It might need to be tweaked, it might be a different beast now, especially since you're like three years out from the study.
Okay.
By the time you hire someone.
All right.
Kind of slightly different department and mission, maybe.
Okay, so can I get with you, can you walk me through the process?
Yeah.
Okay, done, less than a minute.
And you had put yours together as a draft?
Yes, did you guys have a chance to look at that?
I didn't, I didn't, on the procurement part.
Okay, did you guys have a chance, cause?
What we, what we.
Procurement piece only.
Yeah.
Okay.
Timelines.
I looked at it, and that's when I freaked and, and wanted to do the easier.
It's the exact same, it's the same thing.
You know what, I wholesale ripped that off from Subbury and Wayland, I just.
And just plopped in?
Some pieces didn't apply, because we're, um, like, we have a special act, and one of them had a bylaw, so.
All right.
And one of them had the special act, so I ripped that and put that instead.
And that's what I did with the job description, I cut and pasted from like two.
Forty-five minutes?
Okay.
Probably the hardest part was trying to figure out the appropriate timing.
For stuff to get back.
Um, but ideally, um, we can probably put it out for a week or so, but I had a pretty aggressive timeline of, of like, trying to get that out like Thursday. But I don't wanna do that until Mary has looked at the actual timeline.
Okay, do you wanna put that on next week's agenda, then, for approval?
Okay, well.
Or what?
Well, I'd like, if Mary's okay with the timeline.
I haven't looked at it.
I'd like it to go out on Thursday.
I forget when it came out, but did it not come out over this weekend?
Yeah, so, I mean, I didn't expect you to, but I, I don't think there's gonna be too much.
Probably not.
Of an issue.
But if you want me to look at it, if you don't want me to look at it.
I do want you to look at it.
Okay, did you want it on next week's agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and then, even if we have to push it out one week or something.
We'll push it out a week, the deadline, then.
Okay.
Okay.
But really, it's when you start looking at it, it's like, oh my God, this really does have to start really fast.
Yeah.
Um, so, that's why I was being very aggressive with those timelines.
Yep.
Okay.
That actually wrote down here, next agenda, the town adminis- town administrator specs, the fire chief specs. Um, we need to get on the FY twenty budgets. And we also need to think about a search for treasure collector, or what we're going to do about that position. Whether it's a search or no search, we need to figure that out.
Um, and also screening committees, it would be nice if we could put together, or at least start putting together screening committees, so that when we do the interviews in January, hopefully, um, they can help choose the firm.
Do you wanna put that on the agenda for Monday, too?
Yep.
Okay.
A mission statement, then? Or actually appointing people on Monday?
No, not appointing, but, well.
Thought gathering?
Getting the word out, I guess, so it would be a mission statement, I guess.